October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the Iroquois County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd ask you to please bow your head for a time of silent prayer and reflection. If you'll please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
My pleasure allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under our, in the digital, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Ms. Jones, could you review any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Chairman Mallory, we do have several adjustments. The first is the removal of economic development from closed session. There's an addition under closed session of personnel pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, point eleven, A six. There's an addition under new business of ETJ process and request discussion, and then an addition under unfinished business, which is an announcement by Commissioner Howe.
Are there any additions to the adjustments as outlined by Ms. Jones? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as adjusted?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. This evening, we do not have any presentations of any special recognitions or awards. Item six, appointment before the board, we have a presentation by David Hughes with Nest Homes LLC to request a temporary construction easement on property located at two oh four Bluefield Road in Mooresville. Mr. Hughes, welcome, and if you could please let us know what your address is and capacity in terms of your relationship to LLC, or Nest Homes.
Sure. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name's David Hughes. I'm at two thirty-six Raceway Drive in Mooresville. I'm a manager at Nest Homes. We're a local home builder and developer that is currently in our final stages of developing Lakewalk subdivision off of Bluefield Road, which is adjacent to the county-owned property known as the Ropes Challenge Course, as you guys may know it. Back in January two thousand nineteen, we requested and were granted by the board two permanent easements on the county's property for the purpose of installing and maintaining a storm, some storm pipe off of our property. At that time, we held off on requesting some additional easements, which were four temporary construction easements needed per our approved construction plans. We engaged our engineer ESP to attempt to reduce or eliminate them, and we're pleased to say that we were able to eliminate one of them and overall reduce the area needed by thirty percent. So that we're now respectfully requesting three temporary construction easements from the county. And why do we need these temporary easements? Well, the area adjacent to these easements on our property, we're installing a permanent retention pond for runoff from our property and drainage swells and some erosion control measures, which will require us to complete some grading and some erosion control improvements on the county's property. Again, like we did with the permanent easements, we're agreeing to that our HOA will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of these areas, and of course, we'll guarantee the stabilization of these areas. And that's it. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Hughes?
Mr. Hughes, is there, good evening. Is there any impact you're concerned about or aware of that may be adverse potentially in the future to the county's property since you're, I'm assuming you're expanding that retention pond area, make it larger?
No, it was actually, and we've actually made it a little bit smaller from the original approved construction plans. We develop, we're developing our site in accordance with local, state, and federal regulations for erosion control and runoff. So we're in compliance with the regulations. We don't expect any kind of impact to the county property.
On the HOA upkeep, is there any kind of sunset clause, or is that a permanent responsibility to the HOA?
So the easements we're requesting tonight are temporary. They do have a time period. Once we're finished with the work, you know, those easements will go away. We expect that work to take less than three months, and then we'll go into a maintenance period. We'll guarantee stabiliz, proper stabilization of those areas.
And that'll be on you guys or the HOA?
It would be on us.
Any other questions?
Mr. Hughes, moving forward, you talked about stabilization of this area. You wouldn't have any problem with one of our folks with erosion control or something, kind of working alongside you as you inspect these areas and stuff? Our primary reason here is we don't want to do anything that is gonna cause problems if we're ever able to sell that piece of property one day. Obviously, you know, we don't want to have a problem granting a temporary easement there. If you go in there and do what you need to do, but we want to make sure it doesn't adversely affect us.
Sure.
So you wouldn't have any problem with one of our guys kind of riding in there with you and inspecting these projects, make sure everything's going like planned?
No, sir, we welcome that.
Any other questions or comments? I think, Mr. Hughes, what we would like to do is to receive your request and take that under advisement and to use the next couple of weeks to allow staff to be able to come out to the property and get eyes on and evaluate all the details. And then, two weeks hence, we can revisit this request. If, if there's no, I'll just say to the staff, if there's any, if there's no issues from y'all's perspective, then you may want to circulate an email accordingly, and we may be able to just go ahead if everyone is agreeable to dispose of it in that manner. But otherwise, we'll just put it on for, to revisit on our agenda two weeks from now.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Yeah.
And now, we will move on to item seven, which is a public hearing to consider proposed text amendments to the Land Development Code, and Mr. Matthew Todd will present us the information that we will be reviewing.
Good evening to the board. The text amendment we have before us tonight has been under development for some time now. The planning board did vote eight zero to recommend approval of this text amendment. Now, this text amendment, I'll kind of break it into two parts. The first is dealing with a LCID, which we commonly refer to as a stump dump. It was currently in our code, and we went back into that just to make some additions. One, we specifically state that you can do grinding operations with one of these. A lot of them, that's what we were seeing individuals wanted to do. We were having to send them through a dual process through the Board of Adjustment. So it's just trying to offer clarification on somebody that's wanting to grind some of the materials that are coming in to one of these without making them go through that other process. So their setbacks, everything kind of stayed the same with what was already existing. We did add that there'd be a yearly inspection of these facilities, just making sure that they meet whatever the Board of Adjustment had approved, and also just able to get our eyes on it to look for other potential issues as well. And in doing so, we also had to amend, or we decided to amend one of the sections dealing with dust on these sites, and that's basically requiring that they produce a dust management plan that would get vetted through the Board of Adjustment and then carried out by the applicant. The next was kind of a whole new section that we had to take a look at. We were starting to hear some interest about more of a source reduction process, a little more involved than just the typical LCID, and for that, we created a new section in the code with, I'll say, a little more restrictions on it, a little more higher restrictions than just the standard stump dump. This would include, again, something in the lines of processing wholesaling with grinding, your air curtain burners. This, too, would go through the special use board, special use permit process with the Board of Adjustment, with a dust management plan similar to the LCID requirements, along with yearly inspections. This facility, again, I want to clarify that it is only for somebody that's wanting to do this as a true business, where they're bringing, they're bringing materials from other sites in there to process. If you've got a subdivision developing in the south end, and they're bringing a grinder or an air curtain burner onto that site to process what's coming from that site, that basically, for their current burner, needs permits through the state and would not be required to get a permit through the county. Again, this is more for the individual that's wanting to set up more of a permanent operation and, again, receive materials from other areas than just one, one site. We've not really received any public feedback on this, even though it's been advertised, but I would be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Of course, we've ventilated this issue on a couple of occasions and sent it back to the planning board for review and tightening up and additional proposals, which you've responded to, and we appreciate the board's and the staff's review and consideration of these issues. Are there any other comments or questions?
No. I think he addressed everything we'd asked him to the previous two readings.
Okay, then I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone that would like to be heard on this matter. I don't believe anyone signed up, so I'll inquire as to the audience. While hearing and seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the zoning text amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adoption of our twenty thirty Horizon Plan and that the said approval is reasonable and in the public's best interest and furthers the goals of the twenty thirty Horizon Plan because it aims, address common zoning issues and addresses industry changes in the development in this county.
Well said, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. It's almost like I had it written right in front of me.
Well, motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Mr. Todd, and please pass our appreciation on to the board.
Thank you.
We will now move on to item eight, which is administrative matters that were appropriate for a consent agenda, and I would ask that our county manager, Beth Jones, to tee those up, and we will then vote.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number Seven in the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars to accept the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, which is better known as a JAG grant. The next item is a request from EMS for approval of Budget Amendment Number Eight in the amount of ten thousand dollars to accept funds to continue the support efforts of the Community Response Support Team. The next item is a request from Planning and Development to consider calling for a public hearing on November the fifth, two thousand nineteen, in regard to a request by Joyce Johnson to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. A request from Tax Administration for denial of taxpayers' requests for refunds that do not meet the statutory requirement. Request from Tax Administration for approval of the September refunds and releases.
Any further discussion on the consent items? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve pre-agenda consent items.
A motion by Commissioner Norman to approve our pre-agenda consent items. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. Item eight point six is a request from the Finance Department for adoption of a resolution making certain findings and determinations in connection with the proposed issuance of school and community college bonds. Deb Cheek, who is our Finance Director, will be walking us through the details on this. But to begin with, I hereby introduce a resolution sharing certain findings and determinations authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission and appointing bond counsel in connection with the proposed issuance of school bonds and community college bonds by the County of Iroquois, North Carolina.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to quickly go through the findings that are in this resolution. First, preliminary studies have been completed to demonstrate the need for the financing cost of various public school improvements and community college improvements for the county. Second, the board wishes to commence the procedures for the authorization of school bonds and community college bonds to finance such capital projects. The capital projects to be funded by the proposed bonds are necessary and expedient, and the amount of proposed bonds is adequate and not excessive to fund the said capital projects. The debt management and the budgetary and fiscal management policies of the county have been certified and are in compliance with applicable law. The increase in taxes, if any, necessary to service the proposed debt will not be excessive. It also directs the county manager and myself to begin to file the application process with the local government commission. That is for a hundred and fifteen million five hundred thousand school bonds and ten million five hundred thousand community college bonds, not to exceed those amounts. But I also like to mention that those amounts include an additional five hundred thousand apiece, and that is to cover any closing costs that might come up as we proceed in the process. As you know, in past bonds, we've been able to have savings and not have to worry about additional closing costs, but we want to have that in there in the case that there might be some, some tightness in our money. We want to be able to have enough variance in there to be able to, be able to close on the bond proceeds. Also, you are allowing me to hereby appoint a law firm to be our bond counsel, and that will be Womble Bond Dickinson. They have worked with us on most of our bond issues in the past. So I'm asking for your approval of this resolution so that we might move forward with these bond proceedings.
Of course, this is a part of the official required process to be able to place this bond request as a referendum on the, what it qualifies as a general election ballot in March during the primary.
That's correct.
And the genesis of all this began with a report to this board from the Facility's Task Force back during our winter retreat, and a subsequent update of that Facility's Task Force report as it related to excess dollars that we had saved from the issuance of the previous bonds. And so this is just part of that process. We had a public hearing on this matter two weeks ago, which was not required, but which we wanted to lay out all the facts for the benefit of the public and be able to get some responses and feedback. But this is the beginning officially, really, of the process and encourage members of the public to, you know, become educated as to, once again, the basis on which we have found that there is a need, and then the proposed funding mechanism. So are there any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hereby make a motion to approve a resolution sharing certain findings and determinations authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission and appointing bond counsel, as stated, Womble Bond and Dickinson, in connection with the proposed issuance of school bonds and community college bonds by the County of Iroquois, North Carolina.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. I believe, based on the timeline, there will be another public hearing on the first meeting in December.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cheek. There are no announcements of any vacancies occurring on any boards or commissions, nor are there any appointments to boards or commissions this evening. We do have an item of unfinished business that Mr. Howe will...
I just wanted to let you know, on behalf of the board, when I attended the NCAA C Annual Event as a voting delegate for this board, I was elected to the District Twelve Director on the NCAA C Board of Directors that will represent eight counties in our region, and this weekend, I attended the Board of Directors Meeting in Wilmington and was sworn in to that position. But as part of the Board of Directors Meeting, I wanted to return and let you guys know that statewide, in a lot of similar areas as we are in, there continues to be a workforce development issue. People are really impressed with the relationship we have with our, our college and our school systems as far as trying to continue to be innovative, working with those guys, workforce development and training. They can't fill positions that they have either, and they're realizing they're gonna have to make some proactive investments as well, working with those players and the industries and work on all kinds of innovative things. So they, our reputation of working with our school systems and our community leaders and our businesses, that is getting out, and people realize we're being proactive in those measures. So I wanted to let you guys know we need to continue in those measures. That is helping us in our economic development recruitment. Our economic development people are doing a good job. So in all of those areas, I think having a voice at the table will help us. Scheduled to go to Washington, DC on December third through the sixth after our meeting to represent that district and on our Board of Directors for legislative goals on a federal level. So I think that'll help us with our regional goals and our national goals for North Carolina. So just want to give you an update on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe, and I want to thank you on behalf of the board for taking the time, being able to represent us.
Absolutely.
In the NCAA C's convention meeting that they had this last August, as well as continuing to serve on the district and leading that, being the, being the elected leader from those eight counties, to carry forward some of the good things that we're doing, sharing those and learning from other counties what they're doing, because if we're all successful, that will just attract more business to North Carolina. It'll attract more business to this region, and then we start competing with one another. But first, we gotta get them into North Carolina. And so thank you for your time that you've taken out of, away from your business to spend, investing on our behalf.
Can I just roll a comment or two into that to build a little bit on what Commissioner Howe said? Just kind of remind, a reminder of something, I tell this story a lot, but it's worthwhile considering the comments that Jean just made. In two thousand six, the Central Island Council Government gave us a briefing. Now, remember, two thousand six, the Great Recession was, was beginning, or maybe it was two thousand eight that we did this. But anyway, unemployment was already skyrocketing. Our sales taxes were plummeting. I mean, it was a, it was a dismal picture on economic development. Unemployment really, really was high. The official number was high, the unofficial number was much higher. And at that time, we received a report, and you can only imagine how, how it was received when they said, what's really going to drive economic development here in the not-too-distant future is going to be access to labor, or to skilled labor, and access to water. And at first, I thought, man, unemployment is so high, there's no way that the labor situation is going to drive economic development. And you look and you go, gee whiz, that was only ten years ago. This report actually hit it on the head, and what they were saying in this report is they were predicting that in the not-too-distant future, economic development will not be driven by monetary incentives. It's going to be driven by where does the limited workforce that has skills, where do they want to live? And companies are going to be, would be forced to locate where people, where their workers would want to live because there would be a shortage of workers. The other part of that was access to water, not meaning access to water where people can go swimming and water skiing, but access to water for both the industry and for the people who would have to live in that community where the industry's located. In California, Southern California, a lot of their economic development is limited, not just because California's gone nuts, but they don't have any water. So if you want to build a factory and you're gonna need seven hundred people to move into a community, they can't permit seven hundred houses because there's no water. They can't, they can't give them water. So why am I saying all of this? Really, if this board, two of the focuses that this board has got to keep in mind, and I think that we've done a really, really good job of it, and other boards have, is we need to keep making Iroquois County, we should do everything that we can to make it a place where people want to live and the workforce is skilled, and that means a lot of things. It used to mean that they went to college, and we've all talked about how, actually, it means, you know, they're skilled for the folks that are gonna take the, the, we don't like to call it a blue collar job, but, but somebody that doesn't have a traditional four-year degree. And the other thing is, we gotta make sure that, that our, that the waterways and the water systems that we have in the county are clean and we can, and we can use them for industrial and residential purposes. So, so what Commissioner Howe was talking about really fits into something that kind of started in two thousand eight, is the realization that, that really, if we're ever gonna get out of economic incentives, which is kind of legalized bribery, to get companies to locate in your community, and that's the way the game is played, that's the way we have to play that game, but if we're ever gonna get out of that game, we're gonna get out of it by having a superior workforce that is more highly educated and trainable than surrounding communities, and that we have ample capacity for water for both industry and residence. So anyway, that's why what he said was important. That's how it fits into the big picture, and I'm really glad that you're sharing what we've learned to other members, you know, across the state. Thanks.
One of the important factors that was identified there is the, I call it the network, the relationships, Mr. Bryant from Chatham's here tonight, the network of our elected colleagues throughout and stakeholders throughout the county, the state and the federal. We all need to speak with one voice from our elected officials on behalf of our citizens. The people that can do that and address the needs and go after, whether that's grant funding or... funding or other measures, those are the successful people that can put the partisan politics aside and speak in one voice. Those were discussed that are the major benefits in having elected officials, particularly in Raleigh for us, that have been county commissioners, that understand where we're sitting and not send the unfunded mandates back down. They're actually focusing on a caucus for those people in Raleigh of former county commissioners to try to prevent and avoid those unfunded mandates coming down. So the, the more we can bring our colleagues to the table and have a voice from our community stakeholders as well, we're ahead of the game.
Okay. Well, let me just wind up by saying, you know, residential growth is coming, whether we like it or not. What keeps our tax rate low is economic development, and it brings the kind of jobs to this county which provide a very good living wage for people all throughout the county. And no matter where industry locates, people today commute to their jobs, but they may choose to live in a completely different environment. And that's the beauty of the opportunities they have in this area to choose to live in multiple different cultural and economic models. Two and a half years ago, our economic developers told us we were, did not have a problem right now with workforce, but coming down the road, they could, we could not assure potential industry that five years from now, they could add a second and a third shift and, and find 300 workers because the pipelines that we're getting are really from our surrounding counties. We have 20,000 folks come in this county to work every day, and so we're an employment center. But those counties may figure out how to employ their people at their own, in their own places. So we can't count on that. We can't count on a pipeline from Ohio and Western Pennsylvania. We've gotten a lot of good, young workers from those areas, but, you know, you can't count on that. So we have to grow our own. We have to have a pipeline into our own community, our own school system down back into middle school. And that's where, in response to that concern, we had basically an all-hands-on-deck kind of meeting between the two school systems, Iredell Stasiel School System, Mooresville Graded School District, and the Mitchell Community College, where they came together, they agreed that we had a common goal. Each is going to work in their own lane to figure out the best strategy to address their populations. And this year, that is moving towards fruition in the Iredell Stasiel Schools. And I want to point out Mr. Todd Carver, who is on the Board of Education, who happens to be here this evening, and thank him for his service. But that's all coming to a, together, you know, right now. And that's one reason there's been changes in calendars for the Iredell Stasiel and the Mooresville Graded School System, is to be able to ensure that those career and technical education courses are offered in sufficient quantity and provide sufficient depth of learning for our students so that they can come out with certifications and credentials, that industry can immediately utilize them as employees, and they're already prepared and have, have an understanding of what's expected for them when they walk across the stage at, at that high school graduation. So we're excited. We'll, we'll learn more from the, the school systems about the details, and we're looking forward to working with the school systems to be able to make those programs a reality. I think there's probably a three-year strategic plan to be able to implement all of that. And so stay tuned here and stay tuned to our Boards of Education because there's a lot of heavy lifting to do and a lot of sharing of this information so people can, so parents and teachers and guidance counselors and students can understand the opportunities that await them coming in the future. So thank you again, Jean, and this board for supporting that effort. Okay. Any other unfinished business? This is a public comment period. I would inquire as to whether anyone here would like to take advantage of the open mic for five minutes. No takers. Okay. It's the fourth estate. Well, then, we will move on to any new business. We did have a discussion, as I believe was related, about ETJ. We're going to get some information to help us craft policies that achieve our desired goals with our municipalities with the lightest touch possible. County Manager's Report, Ms. Jones.
Two things to report. The first is the date for the Commissioner's Fall Retreat has been moved from November the eighth to November the fifteenth, and that will be from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the Public Library. So again, that will be November the fifteenth, from 8:00 until 5:00. The second item is just to let the board know that this Friday, October the 18th, at 9:00 AM, our representatives and Senator has invited the board for a briefing regarding the North Carolina Department of Transportation's budget shortfall, and that meeting will take place at the CATS facility in Troutman.
All right. We did have a closed session for a personnel matter pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A6. There is nothing to report publicly on that matter. I would ask if there's any additional information or actions to come before the board? All hearts free? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes unanimously. You're adjourned.